To order for Monday, June 24, 2020, if you would stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as justice for all.
Mr. Knutson, could you call roll?
Here.
Austin Bonta. Tom Cherry.
Here.
Kerry Gunning. Mike Hill.
Here.
Gina Geist-Hurst.
Here.
Luke Wyman.
Here.
Denise Little.
Here.
Has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes? Enough so may I have a motion?
I move to approve them.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or additions?
No.
No.
David Adams.
Yes.
Tom Cherry.
Yes.
Kerry Gunning.
Yes.
Mike Hill.
Obeying.
Gina Geist-Hurst.
Yes.
Luke Wyman.
Yes.
Denise Little.
Yes.
Hey Gina, could you move to Austin's seat?
Thank you.
Could we go ahead and call our first new business for public hearing?
We have Z 0320-0010, Great Lakes Engineering Incorporated, Attorney Karen Italian, 6195 Central Avenue, Portage, Indiana, requesting a change of zoning from C1, small to medium scale commercial to R2, low density residential at the corner of Portage Avenue and Crispman Road.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am John Peters. I am actually here for Karen Italian. When this matter was rescheduled, she had a conflict and she was out of town. So I am representing Great Lakes Engineering and with me is Mary Little, who is the senior designer for Great Lakes. So, you know, we are here to ask for your consideration. John, would you talk into the mic a little bit more? Is that better? Yes. I'm sorry.
It's hard with the masks.
Yeah, I'm getting used to this too. We are asking the plan commission to send a favorable consideration for rezoning a two acre parcel of property on the northeast corner of Crispman Road and Portage Avenue. This property is presently zoned C1 and institutional. There is a staff report. Can I assume that everybody has a member, has the staff report?
Yes.
The staff report actually has a map of what the zoning is and what we would like
it to be. The attachment A shows that where the C1 and the institutional, the I.S. is. And the second one would show that we would like that two acre parcel to be rezoned to R2. And the general overall plan is that the property that is to the northeast of that, there's a 10 acre parcel that is also owned by Great Lakes Engineering. And the master plan is to have a subdivision called the Woodlands Subdivision, which would be 12 acres then and 16 lots. And actually, the staff report goes through all five of the things that must be considered before, you know, a recommendation for rezoning should be considered. And the staff report goes through every single one of them. And as you will see, the Portage Comprehensive Plan and future land use map includes this property for future uses, R2, which is what we are requesting. So that would take care of that first criteria because it's in the Portage Comprehensive Plan. The second consideration are current conditions and characters of structures and use in the district. The property that's directly to the east of this is Grace Lutheran Church. That is institutional. That's certainly in line with a residential, you know, designation. The property to the west is where the old Crispman School was, and that's a vacant lot. And it has been zoned R2. The property to the south is all R2. The 10 acres that my client owns to the north and east is R2. There is one commercial lot, a C1, that I think used to be the hardware store, maybe 10 years ago. I think it's been vacant. That's the only one that doesn't actually fit in. But so actually, this would be the best use for this property, is what we believe. And obviously, if my clients were to put in a 16 watt subdivision on 12 acres, it's going to improve the property values of all the property around there. That's another consideration that we believe that is justifiable. For the responsible development of growth, that is because it's already in the comprehensive plan and the future land use map as R2, we believe that we have satisfied all the requirements. So we're asking for a favorable recommendation to the city council to approve the zoning of that two acres, which is abutting the 10 acres they already have to be rezoned to R2. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I open to the public hearing, everybody, if you want to speak for or against the petitioner, will have an opportunity to come up to the podium and speak. After we close the public hearing, there will be no more communication from the audience. We do take very good notes to have everybody's questions answered if you have a question about something about this. So we will make sure that we have that answered for you. So now I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open to questions for the commission.
Madam Chair.
Should we note that Austin Bonta has arrived in the minutes?
I did.
Okay.
Madam President, there are sign in sheets on the stand for each of the public hearing items. And if you would print your name, address, that would be great. And anybody who's speaking on this petition should read the same.
What are you guys doing with the current building that's on that property, the old hardware store? We do not own that piece of property.
Okay.
That isn't, that's the one piece of property that's kind of sitting there. But everything around there is like basically is residential. Correct, right? Yes. I do have a question. Do you need these screen cards that we have?
Kurt needs them for his.
I need those.
For his file. Any other questions from the commission?
Yes. The corner, that corner of that property, if memory serves me correctly, that's a pretty low area, correct?
Well, you know, there was a question that was asked by one of the residential owners. And they asked, they talked to John Hannan, and he said he was going to check that out. And he went and checked it out. And he said that it wasn't, that there was, it was all dry and that there was not a present problem. And wondered whether he was referring to anything specifically or whether he just thought it was lower than some of the other property.
Because if I remember correctly, some years ago, probably five or 10 years ago, there was a sign up there that it was going to be developed. And rumor has it, it wasn't developed because it was such a lowland area afraid of flooding. Has that been addressed at all, possible flooding or anything in that area?
Well, my understanding from talking to John Hannan was that he did not consider that to be a problem right now. I do know, you're right about that though, because 10 years ago is when that, that other, about 10 or maybe even 15 years ago, that 10 acres was, that 10 acre, I'm sorry, that 10 acres was acquired and they were going to, I mean, it was rezoned to R2, I believe it was rezoned anyway. But my notes from Karen Italian say that the owner died, that the market had kind of dried up and so they didn't pursue it. Now that's all I know. Do you know anything else?
Now, and there was a, the city actually did a detention bond in that area also, so that man helped also.
And more importantly, when and if this comes back and goes through subdivision control as part of the subdivision they're describing, we'll be able to then hold their feet to the fire, to the stormwater ordinance at that time. All the stormwater would have to be dealt with when they came back to subdivide into the subdivision they're describing.
And I didn't get almost any words. I couldn't understand it. Sorry Scott. I couldn't understand what the echo.
That's all right. So can you hear me now?
I can hear you, yeah.
All right. So the issue is, you have a good question. So on this rezone, if it's approved, they have to come back under subdivision control at that point, which brings in the stormwater ordinance. So at that point, any stormwater issues would be addressed before it was subdivided down to lots.
I see. Okay.
So at this stage, it's the first hurdle, get it zoned correctly, then continue down the road for the entire subdivision, primary plat, secondary.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I can, I was on the planning commission when this first came to the planning commission about 12 years ago. And we were very close to approval. So, and all that drainage and buffer for Stormy Street, everything was in that plan. Any other questions from the commission? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Is the first a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the council?
Yes.
Correct.
I'll second.
We have a motion to send a favorable recommendation to the city council.
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geist-Hurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
So your next step will be for the city council.
And I believe it's set for July 1st, already scheduled. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case is Z 0320-0011, River Point Incorporated, Attorney Todd Leith, Hope, Wagner &amp; Evans, 103 East Lincoln Way, Valverdezo, Indiana, requesting a change of zoning from neighborhood commercial and R2 low density residential to C2 medium to large scale commercial at the southeast corner of US Highway 6 and Swanson Road, a vacant piece of land.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Todd Leith. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner this evening. I have submitted to you the PowerPoint that's on your screen. So members of the commission may have that. The date's a little different. The date was the original meeting. And so I've updated the slide. But other than that, the slides and your printout should be the same. We're here, as with the previous petition, to seek a zone change and a favorable recommendation from you after hearing from the public and conducting the public hearing, to favorably recommend to the town council, to the city council, the rezoning of approximately half of a 32 acre parcel. And that is on the southeast corner of Swanson and Highway 6 and in red on the slide that's shown. You can see the parcel is north of the Brookview Point subdivision, west of some existing development as well. Your zoning map shows that the northern approximately 300 feet is zoned neighborhood commercial NC, which allows for a range of commercial uses within that district, but stops at small retail. What we're asking, and the balance of the property is zoned R2. So we're asking that we basically slide that zoning district down a little bit. And I'll explain a little bit. And I think I have another slide that'll better illustrate that. Some street views. This is the, looking at the property from the intersection of Swanson and 6, you'll see the Valvoline oil change facility there. This is the Swanson Road frontage. You can see there's very little development along Swanson Road. Kind of a close up of that Valvoline right on the corner. That's the exception out. When we looked at the property aerial in that corner up in here, that's the Valvoline oil change. So you can see it's already in the area developed commercially. And then further to the east, on the other side of Willow Creek, the actual water, the flow ditch, if you will, Willow Creek is zoned C2, the same classification that we're asking for, just simply to be extended further west on the other side. We've done some studies and investigation of the property. And there are not insignificant wetlands on the property. Some of those wetlands, we can probably receive a permit to fill those and mitigate others. But that very large one along Highway 6 is really going to eat into the ability to use that 300 foot strip along Highway 6 that's zoned commercial, that NC commercial district today. So we'd like to be able to, like I said, work a little further south and work around that wetland because that's the most significant wetland of them all. So here's kind of the inlay of what we're talking about. You can see that further to the east, there's already the commercial zoning. And we kind of just want to extend that further out. So we're extending the commercial zoning about 490 feet further to the south, changing it from NC to all C2. And there is still, this area here between the extended line and Brookview is still 532 feet. So there's a significant buffer between the existing residential and what we're asking for be rezoned to commercial and upgraded, if you will, to the C2 classification. I think that kind of explains what we're trying to do. Why we're trying to do it is the C2 classification gives us a little bit more flexibility in the retail uses that are allowed. As I indicated, the NC, as you probably know, only allows for small scale retail, small jewelry shops, gift shops, and things of that nature. And what we're trying to do is have a 16 acre area to work around the wetlands and create a more upscale and more larger, quite frankly, retail shopping center, which would include, and we would anticipate, more medium and large retail rather than the small retail that your ordinance limits right now with the existing neighborhood commercial in that area. Again, there's C2 classifications immediately abutting, as you can see from the slide. And that's the reason for our request. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or those that come from the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will now open for the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? And if you could sign in and state your name?
Reverend Michael Cooper, 5455 Clem Road here in Portage. I'm here to speak against the zoning change. I'm concerned because it involves, my concern involves the protection of Willow Creek that forms the border of this parcel. At the last meeting, the parcel on the opposite bank of Willow Creek passed this body with a variance to build inside the buffer zone for Willow Creek. Protecting our watershed, especially at a point on Willow Creek where it begins a long meandering flow through the residential districts in our city, from US 6 all the way to Highway 20, is very important to me. Many of that meanderings passes through your district, Councilperson Geist-Hurst. I am concerned that the safeguards are not in place, considering that a variance was issued at the last meeting on the opposite bank. And that variance was to allow for a parking lot of an auto body shop to extend well into the buffer zone of the watershed. An auto body shop that deals with hazardous chemicals and paints, as well as disabled vehicles that can leak from the cars into the watershed, into the parking lot and directly into the watershed too. So my concern is that these safeguards are not in place. And so I'm asking, until the city develops kind of a clear protection and guidelines for this important part of Willow Creek that is being developed, that this zoning change be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I will close the public hearing and open to questions of the commission. Attorney Leith, do you have anything to respond with clear protection and guidelines for the watershed?
Yes, thank you. Let me see if I can't get this restarted here. So the gentleman is correct. There is a connection or frontage with Willow Creek. The meandering eastern line of this property, the 32 acres, does have a connection to the Willow Creek bed itself. Your ordinance has three separate buffer yards with regard to protection of Willow Creek. And each one of those has a different level of concern. Obviously, the most inner area is protected to a higher degree. And the development on the east side encroached only into the two outer buffers, but not into that inner area where the water flows and where the ditch is. And your engineers and your utility board approved that variance to encroach in that area. And they did that based upon engineering data and the specific site plan there. Now, we're on the west side, and we have a lot more space than they did on the east side. So I would not anticipate that there would be an encroachment at all into any three of these areas. One of the reasons why I can say that is because we have so much room. We've got 16 acres, if you approve this, to create this shopping center, working around the wetlands and working around the creek itself. So I don't think that there would be any problem with avoiding all contact with any of those buffer yards. The other thing that I want to say is that all of the concerns that you might have, or most of the concerns you might have with regard to some of the activities with regard to hazardous chemicals and oil and so forth, with the repair shop on the east side wouldn't necessarily be true on the west side in a retail facility. Yes, there are concerns with regard to water quality. Yes, there are concerns with regard to water quality that come off of any parking lot, but those are managed, and your ordinance already covers those protections. And as your attorney indicated on one of the earlier petitions, when we have to go through the subdivision process, we're going to have those same protections. You have those same protections with regard to a building permit for commercial. They have to go through your development review, your site review, the engineering department, the stormwater department, sanitation, all of your city agencies are involved in the review process for anything that would go on this 16 acres. So I can assure you that your ordinances are already in place. I work with the city, I know this, and those buffer yards are not going to be waived unless there's good reason for it, and I just don't see with 16 acres why we would need to encroach.
And would you add, if you did want, if the development did want to encroach on the buffer yard setbacks, could you just elaborate on what that process would be again?
So we have to have an engineering reason, and that engineering reason is a plan, a site plan, and that has to go to the utility board, and I-
And then eventually to the BZA to get the variance itself like you did on the-
Does that go to the BZA?
Yes.
No, that was for these side yard setbacks.
Yeah, I think the encroachment-
To get into the encroachment, you had to come to the BZA to get that, and that was after the recommendation, after the review. So there's, it's not as if, if in fact this was rezoned, it's not as if you have carte blanche to be in those buffer yards.
Absolutely do not. We have processes-
Right. If you wanted to encroach into those, there's a process to go through, and that process leads you to, it normally leads you to a public hearing, a more additional comment.
Right. And I don't believe, I don't believe that the property on the east side was even three acres in size. I think it was much smaller than that.
Mr.-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you know how far those, that buff, those three buffers are?
I don't. I would be guessing. Collectively, it's over 100 feet, I believe.
It's a total of 75, 75 feet.
That area south of the buffer between the subdivision and the proposed structures, is that going to remain wooded in that area, or is that going to be?
We're going to keep that in its existing R2 district, and we would anticipate, my client's not the residential developer, so we would anticipate that whoever would buy that property would develop it into a single-family, you know-
Further down.
Yeah, further down. Witted lots are more valuable than lots that don't have trees on it, so they're going to be trees removed to build detention ponds and roads and bring in utilities, but other than that, the trees remain.
Any other questions? I have an additional one. In the C2, you can have a gas station or a car wash.
Okay.
Is that part of the shopping center that you're considering?
My client is not, does not have any particular use that they're looking for today. It's too soon for that.
Okay. The other thing is, how much of the land would be impervious? Would it all be asphalt, or out of the 16 acres, are we totally covering it?
Well, your ordinance doesn't allow that, so-
Besides our-
You, you, we've got, you know, lot coverage standards, and we have to, you know, create our own basin to manage our own stormwater and outlet it to either the roadside ditch with Department of Transportation approval, or to Willow Creek with the city's approval. You know, those are engineering details. I, I, I just don't know, because I'm not the engineer, I don't design the sites, but I, I know that it's, you know, we saw the number of wetlands that we had on the site. I just think that some of those wetlands are going to be incorporated into the design, and it's not, it's not going to be 16, I, first of all, we know it's not going to be 16 acres of pavement, but I think it's going to be more green than a normal shopping center that you would see like Kohl's or, you know, a JCPenney or something like that in a, in a super mall, where you have that sea of asphalt, simply because we're not going to want to fill all of those because it's too costly.
Any other questions? Would anybody be interested in making a motion to send an approval to the city council? A recommendation?
I'll make a motion to send a favorable recommendation to council.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Carrie Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
No.
Gina Geist-Hurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Our next petition is P-0120 Franklin Land Associates, Care of Kimley Horn Associates, 1001 Warrenville Road, Suite 350, Lyle, Illinois, seeking a primary plat approval for the replat of lots 3 and 1 of the GNG Investment Subdivision, two lots at 5947 and 5935 US Highway 6.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Gage. I'm with GBT Realty. We are the developers on the proposed project. Basically, we're here tonight looking for a primary plat approval. We are subdividing a parent track of five acres. We are subdividing .94 acres out of that with a remainder of 3.98 acres to remain with the parent track for the proposed development of a tire retailer. I do have Mickey Walker with me. She is with Kimley Horn. She is our civil engineer, and she can answer any specific questions that you may have.
Good evening. I just passed out the PowerPoint that we had initially proposed for the virtual meeting a couple weeks ago. We are on the agenda for three items tonight, one being the primary plat for the public hearing, the secondary plat, and then for the site plan. Do you want us to-
Can you speak a little bit?
Sorry. We are on the agenda tonight for three items, the primary plat, the secondary plat, and then the site plan. Do you want us to only present on the primary plat to start with?
I have you coming up again.
Okay.
We can run, we can, we can do pri, we can do one presentation, two votes.
Okay.
That'll save everybody a little bit of time.
Okay, great, thank you. So as Bob mentioned, we are here today to, for the primary plat approval for the subdivision for GNG Investments. It is for lot 3 and a portion of lot 1. We are proposing to combine this to be .94 acres of land for a proposed firestone. The primary plat has been, has been approved by the staff. We have provided the existing conditions plan, as well as the proposed conditions plan, which includes the utility layout, proposed defogography, as well as a proposed site plan. For the secondary plat, and you flipped through about halfway through the presentation, it shows the lot combination area, so the existing lot 3 area is .83 acres, and we are proposing to add .11 acres to the south side as a part of lot 1. That will leave lot 1 with 3.98 acres for the property. On the existing property, there is a cross-access easement for all three lots to use to get entered into the site, as well as an existing sanitary sewer easement to the north and an existing 15-foot utility easement to the east. Additionally, we are proposing to add a 24-foot-wide cross-access easement over the existing driveway that connects the GNG subdivision to the property to the east, as well as an exist, as well as a 30-foot cross-access easement to the south between lots 3 and the new lot 1. Finally, we're proposing one water easement, which will cover the existing water service line to lot 1. For the site plan, we're proposing a 6,200-square-foot building with eight service spaces. The building and the lot placement allows for the compliance of lot 1 with the existing theater, or should a new building be put there in the future. The site plan allows for yard setbacks of 40 feet to the north, 25 to the east and west, and 30 feet to the south. The required parking is only eight spaces, but we are proposing 29 spaces for, to allow for the successful operations of the firestone. As of this date and as of May 14th, we have completed all of the development review committee and engineering comments that we have received. Additionally, we received the Board of Zoning Appeals approval on the 27th of January for the special exception for an automobiles, auto service center, as well as variances to the maximum lot coverage, parking lots located with the yard, parking lot located within the yard setback, as well as foundation plantings. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing.
But right before we do that, let's make sure we call, so I think there's three cases on the agenda that are all the same thing. So right now, we're doing P-0120, and I think we should have Kurt call S-0120 and SP-0120 to open it up for the public hearing. Only one of them need a public hearing, but that's okay. Do the public hearing, and then at that point in time, the planning commission can start the primary plat, and if we get through that, secondary plat, and if we get through that, the site plan. Okay?
So we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the-
One second. Let him call those other two real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let's do that first, okay? Since we have three petitions for basically one location, okay? We have a primary plat, we have the secondary plat, which is S-0120 Franklin Land Associates, Care of Kimley Horn, for the secondary plat at 5947 and 5935 US Highway 6 on lots 3 and 1. And then we also have a site plan, SP-0120 GBT Investments, Care of Kimley Horn and Associates, 1001 Warrenville Road, Suite 350, Lyle, Illinois, seeking a site plan approval to construct a 62, 6,262-square-foot Firestone Auto Service Center at 5947 US Highway 6.
So we will have three separate votes after we close the public hearing.
Correct.
We'll have questions, we'll open it, ask additional questions.
Yep, correct.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody to speak against the petitioner? If not, I close the public hearing. And I would like to open questions to the commission for the first preliminary plat.
Is that plat that's on the old theater parking lot?
Yes, it's an existing parking lot.
So it's actually, again, from the side view here.
You're not tearing down the old theater?
We are not, not this time. We're not tearing that down.
The worst is asked.
I'll at least hide it.
Hopefully, it'll be torn down soon.
Kurt, do you have any comments on that, on the blue extension?
Pardon me, on the what?
The .11 acres.
It's the portion of lot 1 that we're combining into lot 3.
Right. They're, they're taking part of the lot, the lot 1, which is the movie theater, okay? And they're adding it to lot 3 for the site plan. They went through the BZA in January for setbacks, and they used this site plan when they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they were granted a special exception and development standards on setbacks based that they're going to go through this process, okay? So they're presenting the primary plat, secondary plat, to basically take that property from lot 1, add it to lot 3. It's been reviewed by, you know, staff, it was reviewed by the county, they've updated those plaques, we made them do a little bit more work on them to make the county happy and all of us happy, and they're basically pretty clean right now.
And is this one where we needed additional ADA parking?
On the site plan, they, we asked for basically the ADA to have a raised curve, okay, and an ADA design, so they took away the parking stops, and they made it to our, our desire, so they have a clean site plan when it comes to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions?
One last one. On the, so the entrance and exit to that is on Route 6?
Yes.
There's no back entrance to that or side entrance?
There is a cross-access from the property that's to the east, the existing triangle building.
And did you say they're not tearing down the old theater?
Not at this time. I believe Bob, you can speak to them.
Basically, that theater is going to be on a piece of property that we're not buying, so the seller that is selling us our parcel is still has control of that theater. I don't think they have any plans at this point that, I'm not sure that, I don't think they know what they're going to do with it at this point. I don't see that it's being there very much longer. I do see in the future that they will tear that down and put up a new building there, but there's no plan been made at this point.
Any other questions?
Madam President?
Did you sign the-
Great.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd first like to hear from-
So we're, first, first thing. First of all- Right, so the first issue you have to address is actually P-0120, that's the primary plat approval for replat lots 3 and 1, the GNG Investment Subdivision, two lots, 5947 and 5935 US Highway 6. That needs a motion to approve, if that's your desire.
I'd like to, a motion to approve the plat?
Primary plat?
Primary plat, yes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Austin, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the primary plat. David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Carrie Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geist-Hurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
That would bring us down to S dash zero one dash twenty. The, the secondary plat.
And that's for the six thousand two hundred and sixty-two square foot Firestone?
No, we, we, the top is page two. So we, we've done primary, now we would have to have a motion and a second and a roll and a vote on the secondary plat.
Secondary.
This is S zero one two zero.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the secondary plat?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
All right, moving along, now we're on SP zero one dash twenty. This would be the site plan approval to construct the six thousand two hundred and sixty-two foot square, excuse me, square foot Firestone Auto Service Center at fifty-nine forty-seven U.S. Highway six.
I'll move that we approve the site plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan?
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our next case has a primary secondary plat also. Would the Plan Commission like me to read both those?
Yes.
Just the two lots subdivision, okay? So we have P zero two twenty. Charlie and Darlene Properties LLC care of DLZ Industrial LLC, three sixteen Tech Drive, Burns Harbor, Indiana, seeking a primary plat approval for the Wendy's subdivision located at the corners of Willow Creek, Swan, and Irving, two lots. We also have the secondary plat, S zero two twenty, for Charlie and Darlene Properties care of DLZ at the, at that location.
Good evening.
Good evening. Glad to see everybody's all healthy and, and good. Forgive me, I'm not as used to wearing these masks either. My name is Anthony Sisgani. I'm a surveyor with DLZ Industrial, representing Charlie and Darlene Properties, care of Jackson Hole Trust Company. As Kurt said, we are presenting a needs and balance parcel, currently two point one nine acres, and we're looking to have it subdivided into two lots, each approximately one acre. I believe you all have eleven by seventeen versions of the primary and secondary plat. I do have full-size versions because I know the eleven size seventeen can be a little difficult to read. So if anybody wants to review those, they're welcome to. So essentially, what we have is we have the Wendy's property that fronts onto Willow Creek Road. And then to the east of there, going towards Irving Street, we have a wooded area. That, that's the portion that they would like to partition off and then later develop, convey and then have that person develop it. So as part of the subdivision, we're also looking to dedicate a portion of the property near the corner of Irving and Swan. Because currently, the existing sidewalks that are in that area are a bit into the property. So that just cleans that up a little bit. Plus, we added a utility easement along the north, south, and east lines of the property, also because there were existing utilities in those areas, and we wanted those to be encapsulated within utility easements as well. Beyond that, I do not believe there's any other items to address. We've addressed all DRC comments that were provided to us for the secondary and primary plaques. So I'll entertain any questions from the public or from yourselves.
Okay. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If not, I will close the public hearing and open two questions to the commission. Why, I have a question.
Yes.
The, the entire lot is zoned commercial C two?
It's a zoned Central Avenue Business District.
Okay.
That's awfully hard to read, but that's covered on general note three on the primary plat, which states the minimum setbacks for that zoning.
And then you'll leave that parcel that you're breaking off as?
Yes, we're not, we're not seeking a zoning.
You are not keeping that zoning?
No.
No, they're not seeking a zoning.
Are not?
This is not zoning. This is a split of property.
Yeah.
Correct. But it's, right now, it's all Central Avenue business. That's why I'm asking.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And that stays the same for now?
Right.
Great.
Okay.
That's just what I wanted to make sure of.
Oh, yeah.
Are there any other questions? Now we are voting for
Primary plat.
The primary plat approval for Wendy's subdivision. Is anybody willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the primary plat approval.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Now we will be voting on the secondary plat approval, which is case number S dash O two dash two zero.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I believe that was Kerry?
Yeah.
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Our next case is M zero one two zero. Judy Nelson, twenty-eight eighty-four Winterberry Street, Portage, Indiana, seeking an amendment to the Hidden Waters plat notes to remove lot nine from note fifteen B three, no perimeter fence or wall.
Correct. Hi, everyone. We would like to have that amended so that we could put a fence around. The more usable part of our yard, since we bought the property five years ago, we were the last. It was a farmland and now we have over forty houses coming to the north of us. It is within the HOA rules as it is not a privacy fence. It's the, like, the wrought iron look fence. And it will not hinder the drain that is on our property, as that's farther back on our property. We did go to the HOA meeting last August and asked for permission and they said yes. And we could do it, so we met with the fence guy and had the quote and put down the money. And then when they went to do the permit, that's when we found out there was more to it than we thought there was. So they've been nice enough to hold this fence for almost a year. So we were told that we needed to come here and ask you to amend that note.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Is there anybody here to speak for the petitioner? Kurt, I believe you have a letter?
I do have a, a letter, an email.
From Ryan.
Dear Planning Commission members, my name is Ryan McDowell. I live at twenty-eight seventy-six Winterberry Road. Our home is just to the north of the Nelsens. They have informed me of the type of fence they're looking to put in. And it appears that it is keeping with the update, updated bylaws of the Housing Association. Unfortunately, I've actually never seen an updated set of these bylaws. However, I was told from Altoff that these changes are in place now. My only comment would be to ensure that the HOA has in fact made these changes in their bylaws and that the HOA is aware and has approved the fence installation as requested. As far as I'm concerned, the Nelsens are great neighbors. And I think that a fence they are proposing will look great as long as the aforementioned items are accounted for. I'm in favor or I'm in full support.
Is there anybody here to speak against the petitioner? If you'll go ahead and sign in.
Sorry.
Of course, I would apologize for my appearance. I got a late phone call on this and came straight from work. I'm actually Shannon McNeesh. I sit on the HOA as board director for Hidden Waters.
Okay, could you state your name?
Shannon McNeesh.
McNeesh, okay.
Yes. From what our understanding here is, with the lot that was purchased, it is in our current HOA as prohibited from having a fence. I'm not here to ask for a no vote, not here to ask for a yes vote. What I'm looking to do is be able to, as a new board member of the HOA and new to this issue, that we could table this vote so I can work directly with my neighbor and a member of our HOA to see if we could come up with a resolution. The problem that we have with coming to the zoning, the Planning Commission to make this change is it, it starts a domino effect within the neighborhood. If everybody wasn't got an attorney, everybody came to the city to try to alter our HOA, which we have all agreed to and signed the contract at closing for, it, it opens up a whole can of worms down the road beyond fences. So I apologize for not being prepared and having the HOA documentation. Like I said, I got the late phone call at work, came from work. Again, I'm not, I'm not here asking you guys to shoot this down. What I, what I'm asking is, is another month to where I can work directly with the homeowner as a representative of the HOA to see if we can resolve this without having to, to get a plat change.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question of the person that just came up, or is that, is that allowed within this context?
We'd really like to wait till we close the public hearing and then we can't.
No, I was thinking about this guy because I don't think he can come back once we close the public hearing, can he?
Correct. That's the problem. So I guess from the board's perspective, just remember, to some extent, and I don't mean to, I'm going to say it in a way that's going to make everyone think I'm going in a direction and I'm not. But whether or not the HOA changes or not, isn't necessarily changing this plat. So my point, and it goes both directions. I would prefer everyone to work it out, but whatever's worked out, whether it would have to require a change at the HOA level through their covenants, if this is adopted through the covenants. And irrespective of whatever happens with that, this note would have to be adjusted here also because it would still not get a permit through the City of Portage, irrespective of the covenants. So one is, you know, from this board's perspective, modifying the plat note has to occur if the fence is going to be allowed irrespective of what happens at the covenant level. I'm not saying there isn't ramifications if the covenants aren't changed and aren't followed, but those are not the same ramifications that would occur here.
So you're saying they're, they're two different, they're two different things?
Correct. They are, and, and, and more to the point, if they're, let's assume they sat down, worked it out, they still have to come back here to change it and, or vice versa to some extent here. So I guess, and I think Kurt has already alluded to, he doesn't have a copy of it, but if anyone, one question I would have is, does anyone know whether or not the HOA has followed through and changed the covenants or not?
Hi, I'm Nathan Full. I'm the developer and I'm the president of the HOA, so I can answer those questions.
Can you sign in?
I did sign in, yes, thank you. You know, we talked about this note on the plat. It wasn't just a note that we just grabbed when we were planning the subdivision. It was something that the Portage Planning Department insisted upon. They wanted openness, they wanted airiness. When you drove in the subdivision, they wanted you to be able to see as much as you possibly could. So this was something that they kind of gave to us. And you know what? It worked out very well. And my problem is, is that the subdivision is not one hundred percent built out. I was given certain standards to develop the subdivision to. And I'm still required to do it at this time. So for someone to come in and change the standards on the plat, and the plat, from what you guys have taught me, is the Bible. Everything goes by the plat. So that's where my problem comes in. So I'd just like to make sure, this is not just a note. This is something that went with a lot of thought, a lot of care, a lot of meaning, and with an intention of openness. Thank you.
Am I allowed to say anything else?
We're going to pull, we're going to bring you back up for questions. We're going to bring you back up for questions. Pardon?
I would go back to the question.
Okay, let me...
I guess our question is, because I was referring to that, is can we ask this gentleman and the other gentleman questions, because if they sit down, they can't ask?
Yes, because once we close the public hearing, so if you have a question for either gentleman.
I guess the question for Mr. McNeesh is, I think my lawyer didn't answer with you here, so thank you. Is, are you speaking as an individual? Are you speaking as a representative from the HOA's board? I guess my question is, are you speaking from the position of that board on this matter?
I'm speaking as a representative for the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let me ask that a question again. Did the executive board or the board of the HOA vote to send you here to speak for them?
Thank you. I received a phone call from both the two other members of the HOA asking me to attend today, yes.
Okay.
It's not quite the same, but it's...
I'm not sure if I understood that. I'm not sure if I understood, because I thought your question was going to be, did the HOA approve this or not? Was there a change in the HOA? According to what Mr. Ryan McDowell said, was that change, does that change exist?
He was asking if he has authority to speak on the panel.
It does not. So there was no change in the HOA?
I can clarify what happened. We had, I'm sorry, last year, we had an annual meeting, and during the annual meeting, fences were brought up, and the majority of the subdivision, and every, Hidden Waters is the main body of the subdivision. Then surrounding Hidden Waters is the addition to Hidden Waters, but it's all joined together underneath the HOA. Now, on the other parts of the, there's only about five lots that you cannot have fences at all in Hidden Waters. The other lots that surround the body of water, which don't have viewpoints, those can have fences similar to what she is trying to install. But the trouble is that when you drive in the subdivision, you've got these five lots which show the water there, and that's why those were remained open. And that's also where our Free Basin Waterway is too.
Okay, I guess I asked a yes or no answer, and I didn't get that.
Okay. Okay, give me your question exactly.
Okay, it says here from Mr. McDowell, "They inform this type of fence that they're looking to put in, and it appears that it is in keeping with the updated bylaws of the Housing Association." Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
That is not correct?
No. The bylaws, the only update to the bylaws has been the additions to it, and then one where we no longer allowed wood-type fences and so forth, no chain links. As far as the type of fences she wants, those are allowed in certain areas, but not in her area.
But not in her area?
No, not in those five lots there.
And was that known at the time of purchase?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's been, day one. I couldn't sell a lot. This was on the plat. A.J. Monroe was the planning guy at that time, and this was very important to him. It's very important to everybody. We had to have openness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing about that, if that's possible?
Sure.
Just to clarify on that being known, I actually haven't, I can get, if we could table this vote, I can get the HOA contract to you guys, but I can read it verbatim to you. It says, "No perimeter fence or wall is permitted, Lots 9 through 13." It's in the contract that was received prior to closing.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing, and I will open up four questions from the commission. And if you'll come back up. Thank you.
So I have a general question. The covenants was drawn up based on the City of Portage saying you cannot put a fence on these X amount of lots.
Correct.
The petitioner is asking us to remove that note, and I guess I'm confused, and I don't want to come across as just point blank, but do we care what the HOA stipulation is? We're here to approve removing the note, and then the HOA can take that up on their own at that time. We would basically give the petitioner the availability to fight with the HOA or the HOA to fight with the petitioner based on us removing the note. Until we remove the note, there's no second step.
We don't remove the note, but we give a...
Variance?
A variance.
Okay.
No, it's not variance, because that's the BZA.
We are modifying the note.
We would be removing it, correct?
Correct. Or at least removing Lot 9 as the request from the note. It's Lot 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, and it facts with no perimeter fence or wall. So they're only here requesting relief for Lot 9.
So Scott, if we were to vote yes, just for what's here, for Lot 9, would she immediately be able to make the fence? I think what you're saying is, but would she then have to go to the HOA to get their permission? It's just they can't give permission until we amend the note. I guess I'm asking...
They could give permission, but she has to come back.
Right.
I have the permission.
So if we were to do this now, she still can't build it until they give permission? Is this just a reverse, or is this on steps, and she go to them first, and then they come to us? I don't know a lot about the way to make up with the HOA.
Our approval does not make the HOA approve her request.
Correct.
I guess, and I apologize, it's my first meeting.
Nope, you're fine.
They're two separate, they're two completely separate things in my opinion.
And the bottom line is this, if we don't change the note, she can't get a building permit.
Correct.
If we change the note, she could get a building permit, but then the HOA and the covenants, I'm sure says that either the HOA itself or an individual within, a landowner within the subdivision, can enforce the covenants either as the HOA or as an individual, and then that would be the stopgap there. So she has two stop signs right now. One is the note from us that won't allow the permit to be issued, and the other stop sign is the covenant restrictions that she's under. She's got to get clearance from both to be able to do it. Our stopgap is we don't allow the permit to be issued, and that's why she can't put the fence up. The HOA doesn't have that authority, but the HOA has the hammer within the covenants themselves. Basically, I haven't read these covenants, but the standard language would be if she puts the fence up in violation of the covenants and they give her notice and she doesn't remove the fence, and they're forced to sue her to enforce the covenants, and then when she pays their attorney fees. That's the standard language in these covenants, when, and then would either be the HOA board itself or an individual landowner within there. That's the normal language within covenants to be able to enforce them. So that's the stopgap on the other side from their perspective. Both have to happen to allow this to move forward.
From our perspective, do we care right now about the HOA? We care about removing the note and let the HOA fall where the HOA falls?
That is definitely, that is one way of looking at it.
But I think you also have to take into consideration that the city demanded that this be in here. So we do have a care. It's not that we care or we don't care. The city asked for it.
For our behalf, but for the HOA, it's, we're not here to enforce the HOA rules. We're here to enforce...
The city rules.
Right.
Correct.
So if hypothetically...
But when you say, "Do we care?" If the city said, and we'll go back to the buffer, do they need to keep 75-foot of buffer to Willow Creek Road because they said they would? Yes. So this is, the city has asked for this.
Correct. What I'm, basically what I'm asking is, we don't get involved in HOA arguments. That's not what's at hand here.
No.
Correct. Okay.
But this is not an HOA argument.
No.
Well, it's...
This is, this is a recorded plat.
Right.
With requirements set by the city.
Approved by the city.
Approved by the city.
And this is the process to modify it.
Correct. So let me ask a question. If she goes back to the HOA and they make a change, doesn't like 60% of the HOA have to approve that change?
Depends on whatever their bylaws are in.
I think it's 60 or 75% have to approve that change. 60%.
Okay, so can I say something?
Absolutely.
At the meeting last August, we asked our HOA, which was Dan Catwig and Nathan Twilla. We said, "Can we put this fence up now that we know you're going to have Phase 3, and we have forty-something houses to the north of us?" They both said yes. I have the letter from Lisa Catwig, which she's the one that we kind of get the emails and stuff from about the HOA, from Dan. It's very generic looking, but saying, "Yes, we give you permission to get this fence." Nathan said, "Yes, I have neighbors that were at that meeting that will tell you that Nathan agreed that we could have this fence." And that's why when we left the meeting, we were like, "Okay, we can have the fence. Let's start getting a quote," because we knew fences are not cheap. Even though this isn't that big, it's still not cheap, and signed the contract with the fence company, because we thought that's all we had to do. We did not realize we had to do this on top of it, and I don't know if that plat note was made before you knew that there was going to be all those other houses. I don't, it doesn't matter, but I've already gotten HOA, is what I'm asking.
Well, I don't know if the HOA, because they have to put it to a vote if they're going to change the covenants.
Right, and that could be, right. But I mean, we just asked for ours, and they said yes, and Shannon just became an HOA member, according to our Facebook, like two days, I don't know. That's a Facebook thing. But we had both of them, both representation of our HOA agree to it last year.
So this is, this is, I mean, not to digress, but this is a story as old as time. The HOAs are difficult. So Lisa Catwig or Dan Catwig or even Nathan by himself didn't have the authority to say yes. Okay? So assuming that's all true, which I'm not arguing any of that, it doesn't really matter. If she could and they said no, it wouldn't matter, and if they said yes and she can't, it wouldn't matter. So the problem is, is that it may have taken a long time to get here, but at the end of the day, for her to put this fence up, this note has to be modified and those covenants have to be modified. Now, there may be a way to get an exception through the covenants without changing all the covenant. I don't know, but ultimately, relief under both would have to occur for her to put this fence up without problems.
Is there a reason that the city did not want a fence on those properties?
I'm sure there was, and we can go, we could pull the minutes. I mean, some of it has to do with, I'm sure what Mr. Twilla is pointing out, it's the openness as you pull in to see the water. Some of it has to do with the attempting to not have a situation like is out on 6 where you have a pond or you have a water feature that's completely surrounded by everybody's back fence in their backyard, and so it's just a water with basically 17 different fences all the way around the backyard. I think some of that was the understanding of attempting to keep fences off of certain locations. So that is probably about reading the minutes, one of the underlying logics of being able to do it so that you could see the water. And if you look at where this lot lines up, Lot 9, correct?
Right, and the big pond is behind us.
So as you, it's on one of the main roads, and that's probably what the theory was.
And that's why we did the open.
To answer the question about, when this was approved, this plat was approved, this is what was approved. So whether or not Phase 2, 3, 4, or however many we're at now, those would have been on different primary and secondary plats with whatever restrictions they would have. So in time, back in 2007-ish, this is what was approved under that, under those stockpiles.
And the amendment I saw that was dated, I think it was 2012, it said, "No lots on, or no fences on our lot because of the drain." But as I said, our fence is away from the drain. It will not block anyone from trying to get to the drain if maintenance or whatever needs to be done with the drain occasionally. Our fence would not block that, and that is what the amendment, what date is this?
Well, and when you...
Five of 12.
When you look at the note itself, Note 15 is on this, what you'll see is, is there's definitely an attempt, because the note's pretty specific as far as the, basically how much you could see through this fence. And so if you notice, you've got a list of lots that it's 100% privacy fence, and then you've got some that are 60%, and then you've got a handful that are zero. So this was definitely, at the time, an attempt to try to make...
Not all fenced.
Right, it says no, it says no perimeter fence or wall, Lots 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. The purpose of these additional restrictions, as to Lots 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, is to ensure that the drainage facility remains unobstructed. That is what the newest amendment says that was dated 5/25/2012, and our fence does not obstruct the drains.
So before we do make a motion one way or another to do anything, part of what I think we need to get to you as the board is, we need to get to what is the fence? Because I think there might be a difference here between a stockade fence that you can't see through and decorative metal fence. And I don't know where we are in between, but that's, ultimately, when you start digging through the note, you realize that ultimately, how much you could see, how much we were actually physically blocking the vision was obviously a significant consideration to the fencing note, which leads me to, what is your, what is the proposed fence?
It's the, like the wrought iron looking, the open, there's a word for it, and it's leaving me right now.
Opacity.
Thank you, that's it. It is this, it is, you can see through the fence.
And the last, and the last one I think she needs to try to get in the record here is, where is the fence, is she proposing on the lot as it relates to the pond?
Do you have that drawing? I think that was in the packet from the first.
It's on there.
Yeah, we have a copy of that.
Is it above this line? Is that...
It's a red fence line.
When you look at that site plan that she presented in the packet.
Which is the usable part of our yard to where...
I think also, I think there are two good points. We should note that information before we make a real decision. Then the other one is, why did the city say no fence? And did they specify that type of thing? And if they specified why, you know, that they had no fence? I think the amendment...
I was on the planning commission when that was.
I'm sorry?
I was on the planning commission when this happened. So when you go in, there's a 14-acre nature preserve, and then there's a huge pond or preserve with a lot of wild animals, and there's water sprinkler. So when you drive in...
There's no water sprinkler.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought there was one.
No.
I apologize.
That's fine.
When you drive in, that's what you see at the end of the road. And then with the homes at 60% opacity, that means their fence have to be open 60% for people to see through. It was looking to go, the strat plan at that point was that we wanted something better than small lots with 14 different kind of fences all around, that we wanted it to be open and clear.
But you all, if I understood correctly, was it mentioned that there was also more houses put on this, in another section was developed since after these proposals were required by the city?
Right.
Which could change, which could change the looks of everything and not make it so less appealing if she had a fence that had enough opacity that it looked nice, I guess, is what, kind of how I'm looking at it. If there's changes, then I think those should be brought to us by the petitioner, okay? Pictures or whatever they have of what's changed from the beginning, and then when you bought the property, okay?
What's changed, you...
And then, so we have an idea of what it looks like, and, you know, is it detrimental to have a fence that even the one you're having is nice, clear view and that kind of stuff? It's not like it's a complete privacy fence. It might be worthwhile.
Well, I can say that it was known because the road is going to where the area that she's talking about, so the road was put there for that phase.
So I think his original question was, what was the city's intent? And you were on the planning commission at some point during that, and then there was an amendment in 2012 that states why they still at that point did not want fences on there.
Well, that did not remove no fences.
Correct.
That only was an additional language.
Correct, saying we don't want fences there to block access to the waterways or whatever is over there. And I believe since then, there is a Phase 2 of the subdivision that is now...
There's actually like five.
Five. There's several phases to the subdivision that are currently ongoing, correct?
Five. There's several phases to the subdivision that are currently ongoing, correct?
Can I have a question? The additional phases that you were stating has been added on since, how is that obstructing the view from that same scenery area?
That's not on the street that you drive in, it is to the north.
I'm not on the street you drive in.
No, but you're on the street that backs up to the preserve.
Yeah, because I'm over one.
Can I ask why you guys want the fence?
Yes, because, so when we bought the property five years ago, the, the main road was like here, and we were over here, and it was a farmland. No one even came in front of our, no one, there was no traffic, nothing, because the road stopped and there was like a fence blocking it. So no one ever, it was just us, and then we ended up with the next door neighbor. And then all of a sudden, we're told, we call it Phase three, I don't know if that's the right phrase. All of a sudden, we have forty something houses built to the north of us, so now we're surrounded by houses. So we just want to protect our part of the yard when the kids are out there, the dogs are out there. Everybody stays in, and everybody that doesn't need to be in gets to stay out, and that's why we're only doing part of our yard. It's just to kind of protect, I guess, why everybody gets a fence.
That's not why I got one, I don't like looking at my neighbors.
I'm being nice and politically correct at this moment.
I'm not trying to be a thing.
No.
I'm just trying to learn about this as it goes, so just to make you try to understand it. If we vote yes on this, it really doesn't end this whole separate issue that they've got with the HOA. Is there, speaking, I don't want to say philosophically, but strategy wise, is there any, kind of, I think what you were asking about, like, kind of like, should we care, is there any merit to expecting that to happen first before we move? Does it matter? Is there an issue with if we do this, might other people come to get things approved? And then, who knows how much time it takes for any one thing to get, you know, worked out with them? And like you say, or is that not a risk at all? Should we just sort of like, the merit of the individual property?
I think that's kind of why the, the question to maybe table it?
Yeah.
To see what they can work out before we make any kind of decision.
Yeah, I, I tend to think if, if, if the, the board for the HOA approves the fence, that would carry a significant weight here.
And I have their approval.
No, you don't.
I have the letter.
Uh, but I don't think, it's, it's not an approval from the, is it a voting approval?
Well, there's only two members, and they both were there and said yes.
That's history, gentlemen?
No, he just moved in, it was Nathan, and it was Dan Catwig.
So you're saying it has to be a vote by the residents, or do we not know? We have to see the actual HOAs to know if that's a legit approval? Again, I'm not trying to say-
No, I know.
They, if they make a change to the covenants, I believe it's sixty percent of the residents have to vote to approve a change to the covenants. The two people cannot-
No, I know. We've done it once because we voted no wood fences in the neighborhood. There's one wood fence that made it before that vote.
All right, I, I'm, Nathan, could you come up for a second? Give me one second.
No, go ahead.
How many, this, this the built out subdivision, right?
No.
Okay, so how many, so you still own a significant lots, right?
No, I'm not.
Okay, and then Dan Catwig owns some anymore or no?
He owns just his own personal residence.
Okay, so right now, who is the HOA board?
The HOA board is myself, Dan Catwig, and Sean.
Okay, so that's the current membership?
Yes, actually, right now, it's in the process, it's with the attorneys, we're getting ready to send out notice, we're just trying to find a meeting place so that we can hold an election, because I would love to turn this thing over to all the residents.
Well, that was the question I was asking, so, at, right now, you're in the process of turning it over to the homeowners themselves.
Yeah, and I would like the homeowners to be able to make that decision, because they all bought it there, based on the-
That makes sense, okay, Nathan, hold on, when is that, when do you think it's getting turned over to the freeholders?
As soon as, if, if we can find a meeting place, we tend to have a date on September fifth.
Okay, so, what, so, when you do, when you get to a subdivision and you're building it out, and it's going to have an HOA, when you have to get to a certain percentage of it built out, before it gets turned over to the homeowners to run themselves? So while Nathan or whoever owned lots, until they get to a certain percentage, and you're probably close to the percentages while you're activating it, correct?
Yes, sir.
He then, within those covenants, I, because when it first got developed, he owned all the lots, so he was the HOA. So as these lots have sold, when they get to a certain percentage, the whole HOA and the covenants gets turned over to the people that live there and own the lots. They haven't got quite got there yet, because they probably haven't got enough, they probably just got to the amount of lots necessary to do that. So, now that I understand a little bit more, I understand why we could have some confusion now. Ultimately, Dan Catwig probably didn't have any authority at that point in time to make the decision, because the HOA hasn't been turned over. Nathan's the only one that turned, can turn it over at this point. But I mean, he has to, but the process has to occur. So, in all honesty, knowing that now, that's, this isn't changing until that board, until that HOA gets turned over. So Scott, who had the authority before the board gets turned over? Someone has to have the authority to make decisions. Nathan. And solely Nathan? Solely Nathan. Do you have a letter from Nathan saying that the fence can be changed?
No, I got it from Dan, because Dan's always the person that hands out all the letters to HOA, to the individuals in the neighborhood that need a letter from the HOA, asking for fences or asking for sheds. It's always Dan that gives those letters.
But the difference was, is that it was not a note on the recorded plat.
Right, that's why I'm here, I guess, is because, yeah, I'm asking you-
So he, he could say, okay, you're, you can have a shed, but it has to match your house.
So, all right, let me ask you more specific. So there's an architectural committee that needs approval, and then they get a letter, and then that's what they need to go get an permit from the city? All right, and so, you're either delegating that to Dan or something along those lines, that's what's happening?
I, I have, I, I will appoint two people on board, to serve my discretion. But I've got to say, I've never given approval for this, and speaking with Dan, Dan has never given approval for this. But I would just like the residents to feel that if we're this close, it affects them, and they pick up right there, there's all these houses. And if they bought with these conditions, let's just let them do it.
Well, and be specific, because we're, until it's turned over, that the, the people that actually live here aren't going to either be able to keep it the same or make modifications. So, do you want, does any of that make sense? So, somewhere in September, tentatively, there's going to be a meeting. At that meeting is when the HOA, the running of that HOA, the managing of that HOA, and the following of those covenants is going to be then up to the people that live in this HOA. Then if the people in that HOA that own lots or homes are going to have votes to then put people on the board. So, when it's finally turned over to the property owners that are there, and then that board is actually formed, that's when that board can make modifications. Up until now, the only one that could make modifications was the original developer. Because until they get to the certain amount of lots sold, it doesn't get turned over. So, there's going to be a turning over of the responsibility and the ability to make the modification to the actual HOA or the covenants that they're enforcing at that point in time. And, you know, reading between the lines from the testimony we've gotten so far, that's not going to happen until the possibility of that occurring for you probably doesn't start until after it's turned over to the property owners. Does that make sense?
But don't we still have to have your permission to change the-
Sure, but I think what we're hearing up here is, even if they gave you permission, that's still, you need both. So, whether the horse comes before the cart or the cart comes before the horse, you've still got to get both. You still potentially, theoretically, have the possibility of getting both of those approvals. But I think under that standpoint, that's not going to occur until the landowners or freeholders vote and take over the HOA and take over the responsibility, whatever those may be, Oz outlined in the document itself when it was all approved.
So even though the two members we had did give me permission, and I have witnesses saying they gave me, and I have the letter, that doesn't matter at this time.
It doesn't. Because unfortunately, those delegates of the original developer didn't have the authority to say yes. So, if you had some, and even if you had approval from the developer himself-
Which I did.
But let's assume you had him writing first.
Right.
Frankly, my opinion would still be that's not enough.
Okay.
Because the underlying document itself that's recorded on your property, that's enforceable by anyone else in your subdivision most likely, still restricts it. So unless there's a mechanism within the covenants for that to be buried from, meaning somebody has the authority to give you that permission without modifying all of the covenants, or that section of the covenants, it's going to take either a vote to change the covenants, that's really all the way there's going to be able to do that. The covenants, I'm assuming, basically adopted, maybe with more language, all the things that's in the plat, plus significant more things, plus, yeah, the explanation you have within your note is more than the explanation that's on the plat itself. But the explanation for the plat itself is contained in the primary and secondary plat minutes. Does that make sense? So you're at the very complicated stage of the early subdivision that hasn't quite got turned over on the HOA, all because it started, it's, it's about percentage of lots sold and developed before it's turned over. Because until then, the developer, until it's turned over, the reason why that is, is a double edged sword. Until it's turned over, the, the developer has to do it all, whatever's required of that, of the covenants and the POA. As people come online and buy property and build homes, then that's when their responsibility to pay the HOA dues and things like that begin. And then as that gets to a sixty or eighty percent build out, that's when it's then turned over.
Okay.
We're just right there.
Yeah, we're, trust me, it's a very crowded neighborhood.
Scott, from our perspective, I'm sorry, I've been asking a lot of questions here, I felt I did, but, uh, when it comes to tabling versus voting like no, is tabling still worth it? It seems like that it would be better to wait until September? I guess they have questions if we were to vote no, not because I don't want to, but that's just based on the situation.
Let's not vote, let's not, we're not, yeah.
We don't know if she can't bring it back.
If, if we've, if, if-
If we don't know, then that would kill us for too long, right?
Right.
Well, unfortunately, it'd make her start over.
Okay.
Completely over.
I don't want that.
It's been almost a year already.
So, my suggestion at this point would be not to table. Tabling is to a date uncertain, okay? So, at this point, my suggestion would be potentially moving this to the September meeting, because we're-
The October, because there, we would be the first Monday.
All right, so the October meeting, then we got to a date certain, our normally scheduled October meeting. Then that way, she doesn't have any more notice requirements. This is notice for that meeting, if this motion's made. And then, they have a clock that they're working against, and she's got a clock they're working against. And we see them in October and see where everyone's at.
On that note, uh, people, is that motion that we table this to our October?
Not table.
Or not table.
Continue to-
Continue.
To our October meeting.
Correct. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
Yep. Second.
Okay.
Two, two. Those.
Got a little buzzer over there.
Thank you, everyone.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay, David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Kerry Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
All right, thank you. You are continued officially to the, our regularly scheduled October planning commission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Good best wishes.
And now for our longest waiting people.
I thought we were done.
One more.
Here, for your review.
We have SP zero two twenty, Portage Township trustee, care of the Ross Group, fifty-nine oh one Carlson Avenue, Portage, Indiana, seeking a site plan approval to construct a forty-five hundred square foot office storage building for the McCool Cemetery at twenty-seven hundred McCool Road.
Sorry about that.
This is a site plan approval, so you won't, you will not have to really sign in if you'd like, or don't.
My name is David Timas, I'm with Timas and Aggie Service Engineering, I'm representing the township, representing Ross Group. We're proposing to, there is an existing building there currently at the twenty-seven hundred McCool Road. It's a little bit smaller than the forty-five hundred square feet. We're proposing to put the new, a new building up, which would have a new parking lot in the front, and would, would have gravel in the back and be enclosed with a fence. The current site plan is basically the same thing. There's pavement in front of the building, and there's gravel yard in the back of the building with the fence. So we're basically want to remove the existing and, and put a new building, an improved building with additional storage in it and, and features in the same location. The new building, the existing building does not have sanitary sewer right now, so we're going to, they, they holding tanks. So we are proposing a sanitary sewer extension and a water line extension from McCool Road over to the new building also. The other, the other features for the building would be the enclosed fence. Since we're improving the site, the floor elevation of the building is going to be a little bit higher, which is going to also mean that everything else will be a little bit higher. And that's why you'll see the note on the south side of that parking area as, as a retaining wall. There's also a dumpster enclosure on there. The, that will be located inside the fence, I don't know which plan you have. The original site plan that I prepared has had it outside the fence, but it'll be located inside the fence. So what we're asking for approval today is for the site plan approval, and this is just Phase one. You'll see on some of the plans that there's a demarcation for, there's a highlighted dashed line that indicates what Phase one is. So everything else beyond that is, is, is future phases, which would include a new roadway that would go around new cemetery plots. But that's not as part of the approval tonight, just the, just the new building and the demolition of the existing building and the proposed new building. We would ask also, if you notice on the existing site plan, C one, you'll notice the, the wetland area and the buffers that are shown there, you'll, you'll note where those are currently located. And you'll note that it's, we're asking, the buffer's going to be roughly in the same location, which means we will need to ask for the stormwater utility variance for that condition. So we would ask that, if you do give us favorable approval, that we, that be contingent upon the stormwater utility approving variance for the improvement inside the buffer area. That's all I have.
That's all you have, okay. I'll open it to questions from the commission.
I have a question, and you helped answer it earlier, Kurt, but I just wanted to make sure that this was not going to affect any of the plots.
No, we're not encroaching on any of the plots right now, and that's one of the reasons why we need to have, continue to ask for the variance on the buffer, because there's not enough, you know, we're basically going up against where the plots are in the existing roadway on the north of the building, and then on the south of the building, we have the wetlands. So we're kind of, we're fixed with a very limited amount of space to, to do this on, so we're going to have to ask for that, that variance on the south side. But no, we're not going to be encroaching on any existing cemetery plots.
Okay.
And how many feet are you going into that buffer?
Uh, will it be? It would be the entire outer buffer. More or less, I mean, it varies. So, but I mean, we would need that, that 20 feet.
So the petitioner will be petitioning the stormwater board for their ability to, to go into the outer buffer zone. So when you look at my staff report, they've, they've completed everything that we've asked them, but the site plan probably should be contingent on stormwater approval.
And we're currently going forward with that right now.
Okay. How many more plats do you have left to sell?
From what is existing, I don't know. I don't have a count on what plots are available in the existing, and I didn't even really do a full count on what would be part of phase two and phase three, on what you'll see on the post-site plan sheet, C2, that shows all the additional plots there. That's, that's just for schematic purposes. It's not really a definitive count on what's going to be there.
So you, you do have quite a few to build? It looks like a really big-
Yeah, we have, we potentially could have quite a bit of plots that we could add to this existing cemetery.
Okay.
Kurt, you mentioned on the, your site, you mentioned your staff report, there's three, it's based on approval with the following contingencies. Have, are we still, have those contingencies, or have they already been addressed and taken care of?
When, when the fir-, when the staff report was first written, they've, they've already provided a photometric plan, and the dumpster enclosure was, was changed, and there's additional site plan that was there. So item one and two have been resolved. The only outstanding item is the petitioner would need to attend a meeting of the stormwater board to request a variance from the buffer, from the buffer zone ordinance for their site plan, to protrude into the outer buffer zone. That is the only outstanding item on this site plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
This public hearing?
No.
I didn't hear you call anyone, I was just making sure that I didn't miss that target.
This is new business.
I have a quick question. You were talking about, you know, interfering with the buffer zone. How is that going to affect anything, going into the buffer zone, damaging any of that wetland?
Well, we're going to have other protections called BMPs in place to mitigate that condition. Right now, they don't have anything. They have a stormwater pipe that just directly discharges, they have runoff from the building, from the parking that just directly discharges. We're going to have a curb on the south side of the property, so that's, that's going to be one element that's going to hold water back from just directly discharging. Then there'll also be catch basins on this, on, inside the yard with structural BMPs inside there to baffle the flow of water, so it mitigates any contaminants that would go downstream into the wetland. So we're going to have those other items in place that's going to mitigate those issues that currently are not being protected.
The petitioner's been working with the utilities, Dan Comenda, on what he's speaking about, the best management practices.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve contingent on the approval by the wastewater board?
Stormwater board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second?
David Adams?
Yes.
Austin Bonta?
Yes.
Tom Cherry?
Yes.
Carrie Gunning?
Yes.
Mike Hill?
Yes.
Gina Geisthurst?
Yes.
Luke Wyman?
Yes.
Denise Little?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion we adjourn.
All those in favor, stand up.
I want all those in favor to stay seated.
Oh, yeah.
I was predicting this.
I told you, I told him at nine o'clock.
You've got a lot to learn.